The meeting of the city college board of trustees for August the 25th. Ms. Thompson, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Thompson.
I am here.
Ms. Brown.
I'm here.
Dr. Collins.
Here in body only.
Present.
Here. Nolan is not with us this evening, apparently, so we are scheduled to have a closed session beginning right about now. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to address the board of trustees with respect to any closed session item?
Maybe you should just ask if there's anybody in the audience.
There are people in the audience who don't see them.
I'm just kidding.
Very important people in the audience. If not, we will adjourn or go into our closed session. We will not adjourn, but we will recess into our closed session. We will discuss government code section 54957.6, labor negotiations with the PCCFA, CSEA 777, ISSU, and the POA. We'll have government code section 54957.6, negotiations on representative employee management association. Government code section 54956.9B, conference of legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. Government code section 54957.6, negotiation with unrepresented employee, college president. Government code section 54957.6, negotiation with unrepresented employee, vice president. Government code section 54957, public employee appointment. And we will be back at seven o'clock. Okay, the board has returned and is back in session after our closed session. During the closed session, we did take action on the items government code section 54957.6 and 54957, public employee appointment. We are pleased to announce that by a vote of five to one, with Dr. Mann being the one no vote, we are appointing Dr. Roche, is appointing Dr. Lisa Sugimoto as the chief advancement officer, vice president of college advancements. Congratulations, Dr. Sugimoto. [applause]. Dr. Mann?
Yes, I would like to explain the thinking behind my no vote. It's no reflection at all of the qualifications of Dr. Sugimoto, for whom I have the greatest respect and admiration and have for many years. It's just that I do not think in a time of a financial crisis, when we have students standing in the halls, not being able to get into classes, is the time to create a new administrative position. And for that is the reason for my vote. I don't think we need four vice presidents.
Mr. Baum?
And I just wanted to say, extend my appreciation for Dr. Roche's leadership in establishing this position. I've long felt that the college needs to be more assertive in its advancement effort and focus in its advancement effort. And I think it will be a real opportunity in the next several years for the college not only to focus on the philanthropic efforts within our community, but also to create an integrated structure where we are pushing the college forward in resource development from all sources, including private fundraising, public fundraising, alumni relations, public relations, community relations, government relations. And I think this is a major step forward for the district. And what I told them is that within a period of years, I'm really looking forward to seeing the college having a full-throttled advancement operation. And USC is going to try to raise $5 billion in the next six or seven years, and I think Pasadena City College will be able to have similar opportunity for fundraising.
Is that before or after they get their football program back?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I'd like to comment that, just to restate, it's funded, this position is funded 50/50 with the foundation. So from a district perspective, we have an opportunity, we hope, to hire a phenomenal person at a bargain basement price. And in response to that, we're looking forward to her efforts being able to more than cover the cost of her salary in what it can do for the long-term advancement and betterment of our students, both in the terms of buildings and scholarships and in many, many other ways. So to me, this was a phenomenal deal to get, sorry to put it in those terms, but to get this quality and this level of a person at such a phenomenal bargain, thanks to the foundation. So normally, I'd be sensitive to four vice presidents, but this one is just too good of an opportunity for us to pass.
Any other comments on this? I would just add that the foundation is very, very excited about this and looking forward to working with Dr. Sugimoto and to getting about the business of raising significant amounts of money on behalf of the college. So we're very pleased to be in that position. So we need to pause and have the pledge of allegiance. And I wonder if I could ask Mr. Martinez to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of August the 4th, 2010. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Yes.
Dr. Mann?
In the, on page three, appointment process for trustee area five discussion with possible action, I would like to make a couple of additions here. I do think that we did take some action, so I think it should show, and I guess we'll have to go back to the tape to find out who moved and passed in the vote, but it should show that we did set the deadline for the closing as August 27th. And I think it also shows that we agreed to have an ad hoc committee do the screening of the applicants and identify the finalists, and that this ad hoc committee would be composed of Ms. Brown, Mr. Thompson, and me, and that we agreed that we would post the agenda and that all board members were welcome to attend. And so I don't have that all written out, because I think you'll have to go back and listen to the tape, but I think those are two actions and they should be included in the minutes as such.
I think it might be helpful also if we attach to the minutes the board member vacancies selection procedure that has been prepared and which Ms. Thompson has handed a copy to each of us this evening, so perhaps it'd be just good to attach that as an exhibit to the minutes as well.
And I had another correction.
Okay.
On page four, item two, it says, Dr. Jacobs and Dr. Sabab presented the fall enrollment report. I think we need at least one more sentence of the detail about what the fall enrollment is, and particularly what they're doing to make, identify more seats and open spaces for more students. So I can't put all that, but maybe Dr. Jacobs or Dr. Sabab could. I would like for the public to know that what the situation is and what we're doing, because I thought it was a very excellent report.
Okay, any other comments or corrections, additions? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I move that the minutes be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved as amended. And we're now, I've got to skip over introductions and announcements if I may, just because we do have a request from members of the public to speak on non-agenda items, two, this item 2D, request from Roberta Martinez, Susie Ling, and Johari DeWitt Rogers. So if we could welcome the three of you to come forward, please.
Good evening.
Evening. Welcome.
We're here representing the three presidents advisory committees. And in our joint advisory committee in May, we collectively took a vote to support a letter that Roberta is going to read some excerpt from tonight. And so we're standing here tonight in solidarity with an issue that was brought forth first by the president's Latino advisory committee, and the three advisory committees are standing in solidarity.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Pasadena City College presidents, African-American, Asian-American, and Latino advisory committees, stand united against Arizona House Bill 2281, which forbids school districts from offering ethnic studies classes. This law undermines the state's obligation to protect an individual's right to learn about and meaningfully engage with his or her own linguistic or cultural heritage in conjunction with others. Ethnic studies contributes to a more inclusive social vision for American society. Efforts to mischaracterize and demonize ethnic studies constitute an assault on American society's most deeply held principles: equal rights, educational opportunity, free speech, and academic freedom. If we deny these rights to some, we deny them to all.
Wanted to remind everyone that PCC is very, very proud of being one of the most continuously offering ethnic studies since 1971 in many of the disciplines, except math. But even in PE and in other disciplines, too. And we just established, or a few years ago, the GEMS major, the Gender, Ethnic, and Multicultural Studies major. And so we stand behind this very proud tradition that PCC has endured. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, I have a request from Patty DeOrange Martin. Is this with respect to an item that's on the agenda or a non-agenda?
Non-agenda.
Okay, thank you then.
Good evening. I wanted to officially announce that Pasadena City College has been selected as a veteran-friendly school by the G.I. Jobs magazine for 2011, and this puts us at the top 15% of all colleges and universities and trade schools nationwide.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to address the board on non-agenda items? Then let's go back. We may then, please, to introductions and announcements. Dr. Roche?
Yes, thank you, President Thompson. I have a lot of good things happening. I have a few very quick announcements before I introduce Patrick McCallum. I did want to thank my colleagues, Susie, Roberta, and Johari, for bringing forward that statement, which is in complete accord with the social justice history of this great college. And so I look forward to working with the advisory groups to continue our history of social justice. I do want to congratulate all of the staff for the great work they did to merit the honor of being a veteran-serving institution. I see you took the plaque back, but I want to make sure that we get it.
[laughing]
And we will put it in a prominent place. But this is a symbol of our deep commitment to the veterans who have served our country and served this community. Couple of quick ones. I wanted to thank Vice President Jacobs, who was kind enough to go over and officiate at our pending ceremony of the vocational nursing program tonight. We pinned and licensed, let's see, how many, Jackie?
Twenty-four. Twenty-four.
Twenty-four new nurses are out there doing good work under the PCC alumni banner. So, thank you.
[applause].
And I have two more quick ones. One from Juan Gutierrez, who's from, who of course is our director of PR. Juan, if you could just briefly shout out your news at the podium, and then Elaine, I'll ask her to give us her good news.
Thank you, Dr. Roche, board of trustees. Just wanted to announce that Pasadena City College is on the executive board of the National Council for Marketing and Public Relations. This year, we're the chair of the awards, and this is District Six. For those of you unaware with this organization, it promotes two-year colleges through communications and marketing, and it actually covers California, Arizona, Utah, Hawaii, and Guam. And I'm really waiting for the annual conference in Guam so we can go there.
[laughing]
But basically, as the ward chair, we got 245 entries from over 100 colleges. And we had judges from a lot of prominent organizations in the Southland, including the Dodgers, Sony, Skechers, universities like UCLA Occidental, University of Redlands, and obviously the Pasadena Star News and the LA Times. But what I really wanted to announce is, for the first time in the organization's history, students got to judge. And it's very important that I say this, because most of the things that PR, colleges, anyone does is for students. And I want to thank Nolan Pack and Chesley Pack and all the AS students that came out to help us judge these 245 entries, because it really puts things in perspective, as PIOs, as VPs, as presidents, as even board members. We think we know what motivates and how to reach students, but really, the students are the only ones that know. So thank you.
Thank you. Juan? And last but not least, Elaine has great news on one of our alums. Where's Elaine? Ah, you're over there, sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Roche. I'm pleased to mention, to announce, that we've been notified by Scott Lay's office, president of the Community College League of California. The PCC alum David Rust will receive the California Community College Distinguished Alumni Award for 2010. He is one of five being honored this year. The award will be presented at the league's annual convention this November in Pasadena at the convention center. It is given to men and women whose attendance at a California community college has helped them to achieve their goals and their dreams and to make a difference in their community. Mr. Rust is an award-winning photojournalist. He's covered such far-reaching events as the 1991 Gulf War, the Croatian War for Independence, the Haiti earthquake, and most recently, the Deepwater Horizon oil rig disaster. He is one of 10 distinguished alums at PCC to have achieved this honor, and he joins the ranks of individuals such as Jackie Robinson, Jaime Escalante, and Octavia Butler. So we are delighted, thrilled, and proud. So, thank you.
Good. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and with that, I would like to introduce Patrick McCallum from the McCallum Group, and I'd call Patrick forward for his report. Patrick was kind enough to come at his own expense to give us some information about the McCallum Group itself, but also to give us an inside report on what's happening in Sacramento with respect to the budget and with respect to significant legislation, including AB 1440, on which we have a resolution tonight. So, Patrick, we thank you, we welcome you, and we turn it over to you.
Dr. Roche, you never told me it was at my own expense. This is how we, so I just think if your distinguished alum can cover Croatia, can cover the latest Gulf War, the Gulf War, what's going on in the Gulf, then it's exactly the kind of person that can cover what we're doing in Sacramento. Because there's a fine line between the kind of wars that are going on around and really what we're facing here in California and what I see in the Capitol steps all the time. So what Dr. Roche wanted me to do is talk a little bit about our firm. There's two firms. Get in the budget, that's what you really want to hear about. I will give you my assessment. But after 30 years of doing this, I feel less confident right now in giving you a determined date and an amount, though I can sort of work through what I think, if I had to guess, would happen, I don't like to say. We can cover, there's probably 200 bills, we'll cover some of the main bills, and then give you a quick perspective of what I think some of the issues are in 2011. The questions are always the better part of this. So, enter? So we, I have two, we have two companies, kind of a full-service operation for community colleges. The College Brain Trust is a company of 47 consultants, mostly retired college presidents, vice presidents, faculty, IT, and we're doing a little bit of everything for California's community colleges, from educational master planning to information technology, managing government's work. We've done a lot of IT work and facility work. So there is a typical approach. McCallum Group, Inc. is a little bit of my background. I started in 1979 for a legislator who was the chair of the higher ed committee and became the consultant to the Assembly Higher Education Committee. At the time, I worked for him. We carried the post Prop 13 bailout bill, and I carried community college bills. My career's been around community colleges. My father's a retired faculty member from community college, was president of statewide academic senate. His brother was vice president of alonies. So been a lot of community college in our background. I spent 17 years as executive director of the faculty association, of which I've probably been on this campus many times, making legislative reports. Went out on my own about 11 years ago and done work with the lobbying side for about 15, 20 districts. We created the Brain Trust about three years ago. The way we work is very factually based, very data-driven, whether it's with McCallum Group or the College Brain Trust. So data has to drive it. Where are we going to be in five years? What does that mean for either an educational plan or a legislative plan? There's a research and review that's contextualized, so what do people and individuals at a college campus believe that's going on with data? Every college has its different culture and data, so where do we, how do we collaborate? Put recommendations together? And then how do you make it work, given your college? So that's sort of the process that we do at McCallum Group. And it's pretty consistent with McCallum Group and the College Brain Trust in how we approach. So let's move to the budget. This is sort of the numbers that you all know. You've seen it, that essentially, we're pretty close between the governor and what the conference committee has gotten, has put before us. The difference really is in some categorical backfills and this view over negative COLA. So the categorical funds that the conference committee, one is the $35 million, which would backfill the ERA funds, which we got this year, and the other is a $25 million augmentation to our CTE fund. That's coming from the speaker who's made that his priority. The governor had proposed a, what we call a negative COLA this year, both for K-12 community colleges. The conference committee, this is the Democratic Conference Committee, would backfill that with the $22 million. There is no increase, fee increase by either side. So of course, the debate goes much bigger than this. And we could go on for an hour to have a discussion about really what's going on in Sacramento. But the bottom line is, to get towards the governor's budget, we need, in a minimum, $2.5 to $3 billion above the governor's budget. And that's where this $4 billion debate of the Democrats have proposed revenues and the Republicans have those cuts. And the way it works is that, as you know, the governor's proposed eliminating childcare, eliminating CalWorks, and much deeper cuts actually to K-12 than we're receiving. And it's clear that the Democrats will not vote for a budget unless CalWorks, childcare, and some of the augmentations are restored. And that's in that $2.5 to $3 billion range. So there we lie between two different visions of California, between the politics that are going on in this thing that we could, that we get caught into, and other side issues that are going on, and a system that really is made to be dysfunctional here in California, and trying to position community colleges within this. The positioning comes through a variety of ways. First of all, we get caught in the Prop 98 discussion with K-12 and the politics of suspending and voting on K-12 and dealing with children. We have basically battled this thing, and I've made my career on this. I negotiated the Prop 98 split when I was at FAC, which was the common, what we call 11% share of Proposition 98. And for years, we made that, give us our fair share. We are now closer to 12% of Prop 98. But when I negotiated that deal, and you took students, full-time equivalent students between community colleges and K-12, in the late 80s, we were 11%. We're now closer to 15%. That means over the years, we have dropped in our per-student spending for Prop 98 as money, inadequate money, has gone to K-12. So we're no longer in a split battle, and we have to get in a policy battle. And the simple policy is, we're growing very rapidly. K-12 is not. They need the money. But at some point, you have to deal with this rapid growth going into higher education. And that's been a simple mantra that we've had for a number of years, and the numbers are there. The legislators know it, the staff knows it, the governor's office knows it, the press has picked up, your students that are here, each faculty member here. the press has picked up, your students that are here, each faculty member here, we know how many students we've turned away. And that is this kind of debate that gets, are what kind of state we're going to have, and are we going to have an educated state? And certainly, from a Republican view, which is community-driven, inexpensive, quality-driven, we need to put our money into community colleges, and they're saying that. And certainly, from a Democratic view, opportunities for new Californians to get educated and all the rest, it's frankly, a bipartisan policy position on community colleges. What it's not, and these other three programs are childcare, CalWorks, and K-12, is we are not a political, powerful, big player in the state of California. And the political, powerful players have huge PACs, which we have none of that. So, now you get into, all right, so you get to, do they raise $3 billion? I could tell you how they get to $3 billion, and I could tell you right now, what I think will happen is, I think they'll take what this corporate tax cut that got adopted last year. They will, they will not put the tax cut next year, and they'll extend it two or three years. That's $2 billion a year. There'll be some majority vote kind of fee revenues, and you're getting closer to 2.5, 3 billion, and now you've got a billion dollars' worth of cuts. That's in exchange for the Democrats, and I guess us getting that. There'll be some reforms on government expenditures, future budget expenditures, and pension continues to be on the table in pension reforms. Not easy issues for the Democrats within it, and somewhere around there will be a deal. And the deal will be, could be this week, could be tomorrow night. My guess is probably we're looking in October. If you would have asked me last week, and when I wrote this thing Monday morning, I would say it's probably going to be post-November election, what I was hearing last week. Last, yesterday, I had more positive feedback. I talked to the Senate Budget Chair, Duchenehy, who, as you all know, has been an avid, was a trustee in San Diego District, an avid supporter of the community colleges. She says the community colleges are not going to get cut. I had dinner last night for a while with Speaker Perez. He says the community colleges are not going to get cut. Senator Dutton's going to be new Senate Republican Chair. He says community colleges are off the table. So, yesterday, I said, other areas are going to get cut, but it's not going to be community colleges. It looked pretty good. We could be looking at the governor's budget, maybe negative COLA, maybe some of the categorical funds restored. But you still need to get tough votes for Democrats and tough votes for Republicans within this. And that's where each of us in this room, we're going to have to play a role. It's not about, really, we've done what we can do in Sacramento, we've kind of gone through all the stuff, we've given the policy arguments. I did it yesterday, you don't overdo it, made the rounds. The real discussion now is what's happening in legislators' districts. When they finish tomorrow, Friday night, the session ends and they don't have a budget. And they come back here, and we start not getting checks, and some students don't get their CalWorks, and you know, how long we can hold out and what that means. But it's quiet discussions with Republican members and Democratic members, what it means in your district, and what can we do on their side to have, give them some courage to make some votes on this thing. And right now, they're, everything in Cal, in Sacramento has been operated by fear. So, then you have these other outside environmental, you know, the Whitman campaign said to me the other day, that if the budget holds out, that helps Whitman. So, Republicans believe a holdout of the budget helps their governor's candidate. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but, so that's going on. The Democrats, well, if we hold out in November, we'll have maybe the passage of this majority vote initiative. They have the elimination of the tax cut, which is $2 billion on the initiative, and maybe Jerry Brown is governor, and we can negotiate a, a better, so maybe, and maybe it's about time, because we've always done this since Prop 13, that we really let the public feel, these are conversations you hear, um, don't shoot the, feel what it means to have substantial cuts. I mean, not, this year, we had an 8% cut, huge cuts to each of us in this room and everybody else and students, but we're talking substantial cuts, 20% cuts, to govern, and really see whether the public then goes back and changes these rules that made it so difficult. So, you have all this political, you have legislators worried about their elections, governor's candidates within it. Within it, you have people really questioning whether we have created something in California that is so difficult, we can't change it. And there's legitimate issues on both sides. We're a high-tax state in some areas. There's other taxes that are not high-tax. How do we really think about our taxation system? How do we, how do we create where we have less regulations? California community college is the most highly-regulated community college system in the country, as you all know very well. So, we're a very regulated state, and that's an issue that the Republicans have put on. Can we have legitimate discussions in this thing? You know, I don't know. They'll probably do what we call a get-out-of-town budget. They will delay the tax cut for two or three years, do minimal. I think we'll get close to the governor's budget. Don't, you know, if I had to guess, I think we'll be in that range, and we'll be right back at this next year, if I had to guess right now on the budget. Now, there's some subtle issues within this. You have, you have some staff that would rather fund categorical programs than growth. Members generally would prefer to fund growth, so whether some of that growth money, 122 million in growth money, goes to backfill categorical, kind of happened to us last year. Speaker put this 25 million in CTE funding, high priority, but are you going to do that instead of giving you the flexibility to determine growth? No, we don't think that, but it's politically popular with Republicans and the Speaker. So, that is kind of interplaying within that. And then you still have all this language around accountability, which we've taken out of the budget stuff, you know, and your senator here has been the lead on that stuff, been taken out, but still kind of floating on the table. So, those are kind of the more technical things that I work on and we're working on. Little bit of play, what I think the, the budget might look like, and of course, be glad to answer more specific questions on the budget. Let me quickly go through the, the bills that Dr. Rocha asked to talk about. Here, where all these bills and budget, if there's one word that, you used to say fear was the word, what, what controls California politics. I say, lack of trust. People don't trust us. They don't trust government. No one trusts each other. Democrats don't trust Republicans, Republicans don't trust Democrats. They don't trust our CEOs, we're dealing with bills on that. They don't trust whether the academic senate will put in the transfer degree bill. Senator Lou's not sure whether we're really going to put student success, so she had ideas on, as you know, what the bill started. I've been in many discussions, as you've been with her. She has a sort of radical difference. So, we've been working on a best value procurement bill that would allow you in your bids, rather than just low bid, to say, if this counter lasts us 25 years, and we pay a little bit more money for it than the low bid of something that's five years, we ought to have best value. Well, no one trusted on this, so it's taken me three years to kind of get this best value bill through. The assessment pilot project bill, you have both sides on this. Some people don't trust that we can do a single assessment, think it'll have lots of problems, lots of cots, maybe inadequate for, and others feel it's the only way because they don't trust the other tests. So, trust is sort of what I get every day. There isn't a day in the Capitol where I have somebody say something to me, and if you guys were to hear this, you would just cringe, say something about community colleges. Despite all that, when you take us, and you take everybody else in government, and you say, who's doing the best job? Pretty much, we get ranked the highest rating of all the kind of public sectors. Certainly, everybody believes in police and fire and all the rest within it. But when you look at that, despite all the criticism we hear in the trust, we still come out. And that's why I think we're looking at coming out on this budget thing with around the governor's budget.
Yeah, Patrick, I was just going to ask you to finish up, because we have some stuff, but if you could, you know, in, in reviewing that, since we have a resolution on the mandated waiver on AB 1440, that, we have a resolution on the agenda today to support the request for the waiver of costs connected to the PIDEA bill. If you could just kind of give a sense of when, you know, when that bill's actually going to happen and what the actual waiver mandate means.
It's just passed the Senate floor this afternoon, it's down in the governor's desk.
Okay. 1440 is.
1440. There were people in the governor's office, Department of Finance, that didn't trust us, that we would implement quickly and fast, you've got to implement this transfer degree. I assume you know the, a right of way. So, they basically did something quite radical, never been done before, said, if you don't implement a transfer degree, we're going to hold back your apportionment. This is something they've been trying to do with cities and counties and not successful. We weren't too happy with that language, but the language got, was negotiated, wasn't in the room. And so, we came up with a secondary idea that said, if we could get, because they were also worried about whether districts were going to apply mandated costs. If we could get 72 districts, to each district to say, we won't apply for a mandated cost on this thing, we'll exempt ourselves from it, we'll, you take this language out. And so, that's what we had to do. The language is still there, but the language says, if we get 72 community college districts, then the language tying it to apportionment comes out. And that's a huge problem, tying it to apportionment. So, this year, it's transfer. Next year, you have a governor that says, I want all your classes to be CTE, and if you don't do it, I'm tying it to apportionment. Or, you know, my friends in the faculty say, we want 85% full-time faculty ratios, and if it's not done, you don't get your apportionment. So, it's a bad precedent, but at the same time, this is the governor that's been very supportive to us in the community colleges, and so, this is the language, and you know, this kind of bypasses and exempts the language. So, we're urging every district, and I think we've got pretty much every district now to support it.
Thank you, Patrick. Are there any questions before we break, end the presentation? No?
Any questions or comments? Good. Thank you very, very much for-
Thanks so much, Patrick.
Very good presentation.
And then finally, just on the screen, in about 30 seconds, we just wanted to put up for you the fall 2010 enrollment update of, so that you could see with facts and figures where we are for our fall enrollment. And of course, we start classes on Monday, so. 45 seconds.
As you said, very fast, I just want to point out the colored lines in the middle. Last time we were here, we talked about adding seats. What we did is, we added the extra seats, and then we tracked how we were doing in filling them. You could also see that we've also added sections, we're up to an additional 26 sections. Down at the bottom, just pay attention to the number that says percent of seats filled. It says 98.7% of our seats were filled at 245 today. But that's based on limit and waitlist, and now I'm going to show you a nice little extra chart, just for fun, by Dan. This one right here is 245 today. If you take out the waitlist, which is the actual number of seats available in, in the sections, we are actually 105.7% filled. So, we're filled.
So, we can, and, and, you know, you'll get a, a paper copy, but I think the essential piece of the report, at the bottom line, is that our efficiency, the, thanks to the faculty, leadership of Jackie Sabah, that the sections are about the same, the overall efficiency has gone up a great deal, and our, and so therefore, we have been able to serve many more students without increasing the budget. So, I'm grateful. And that's my report. Thank you, President.
Are there any questions of Dr. Rocha? Okay, let me go back, if I may, then to item 2C, introductions, announcements. Anybody have introductions or announcements to make? Moving past that, reports from Board of Trustees members. Mr. Baum?
I just, two things I wanted to call people's attention to. I was pleased to attend the reception hosted by Senator Lou in honor of Dr. Rocha on Sunday afternoon, and it was a tremendous community turnout, and you could, you could see the affection that the community has for PCC and the attendance, members of the city council, members of the school board. I was in the northwest part of Pasadena, and Dr. Mann and Mrs. Brown were there, and Dr. Rocha hit a home run with his remarks. He, he really, you could see the admiration from the community for his leadership, even in the short time that he was with us. And that was also evidenced, in case anybody hadn't seen, in a recent column written by Larry Wilson in the Pasadena Star News praising the, the leadership and vision of Dr. Rocha. And I was pleased to see both of those events, and made me proud to, of the work he's doing and the work that the college is doing.
Mr. Martin?
None, thank you.
Dr. Mann?
Nothing.
Ms. Brown?
No report.
Dr. Fallow?
I just wanted to thank the board for approving my appointee to the Oversight Committee, Dr. Brad King of Arcadia, who was a psychologist at USC. Thank you.
Mr. Pack?
Yes, I did attend the California Community College League, or Community College League of California, rather, workshop for student trustees, the weekend of August 13 through 14. So, I'd like to thank the board and Dr. Rocha for sending me to that, because it was a wonderful learning experience and an excellent networking opportunity to speak with other student leaders from other community colleges across the state. It was also very inspiring, because many people are looking to accomplish great things this year. We talked a little bit about defining student success, I guess. Scott Lay gave a presentation to us, and so, I look forward to our presentation later this meeting on the accreditation and EMP, so that we can talk more about that. And also, I had the privilege of sitting in with Dr. Van Pelt at a foothill transit negotiation for the I-Pass, which went really well. We knocked a lot of money off of the total, so that we're getting a decent bargain, and the I-Pass is set to go for this fall, and we're hoping that we can integrate it with registration for the spring.
Anything else?
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Shared governance representatives, Dr. Douglas?
Nothing to report tonight, thanks.
Mr. Martinez?
Just two items. The academic senate is making every effort to stay on top of Senate Bill 1440, to, to be aware of the final language. We've, we received a letter from the Chancellor's Office saying that, let's wait for the final language. As you may know, that legislation will mandate that we align basically our AA degrees with transfer requirements to the Cal State system. So, there may be changes, we just don't know where that will be going quite yet. And again, so we're waiting for the final language in the legislation and for guidelines from the Chancellor's Office. The second item is that I'm very glad to announce that the Senate's Distance Education Committee has produced a new web link. Special thanks should go out to Sandy Haynes, who's in the audience, and it could be found at pasadena.edu/distance. It's a link that includes a multimedia welcome message, a listing of all of our distance education courses and resources for students, staff, and faculty, and I would encourage you to take a look. Thank you.
And I, and I want to congratulate Sandy and all the members of the DE Committee, and we should give them a big round of applause, and go to the, get a chance, go to the website, it's great.
Ms. Smith?
Right now, the classified Senate's focus is on self-evaluation of the Senate's performance and levels of success in achieving our goals. Our next meeting is scheduled for September 1st, at which time, those responses will be reviewed and methodologies for performance will, for improvement will be discussed.
Ms. Jackson?
The associated students attended their summer AS retreat, and we're very excited about that, because we set all of our, the majority of our goals for the year, and so, we've got a lot of great things planned. We're ramping up for our first few weeks of school. It's already going to be Monday, the first day of the fall, but we are setting up for our Week of Welcome. It's been renamed so as to not be confused with Welcome Day. And at the Week of Welcome, we are very happy to boast student service representation, but also healthier food options. We're going to be having a fajita bar. And we're also, we, we bought the rights to Toy Story 3. That's the one that's in the theaters right now, and so, we'll be showing that in the quad, I believe. So, we'll be doing that as well for the Week of Welcome, Week of Welcome. And we also just received a loan from the Flea Market Board of Directors for a laptop rental program, so we'll be purchasing 12 laptops to rent out for the beginning of the fall. fall. And we'll be, that rental program will be operating through the Office of Student Affairs. Thank you.
I just got corrected as to, I misintroduced you, Ms. Hammond, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Thank you.
Okay. Then let's move on to approval of consent items, if we can. Is there any consent item anyone wishes to take separately? Dr. Mann?
Twenty-seven P. Oh, no, I mean to discuss, not vote on it separately.
Twenty-seven P?
Twenty-seven P, uh-huh.
Okay. Any others? Dr. or Ms. Baum?
Twenty-four B, twenty-five B, twenty-six B, and thirty-two B.
Okay, Dr. Mann, let's take yours first, please.
Okay, well, on twenty-seven P, I didn't know we were going to go backwards. Excuse me, just take a second. I just wanted to point out the retirement of Professor Rich McKee, who has, after 33 years, is a professor of natural sciences, and we all know how committed Dr. McKee was to his students. He's been coming to many, many board meetings, and we all know how committed he is to transparency and open government, and we wish him his best in his retirement.
Okay, Mr. Baum?
First, I just want to add something on Mr. McKee, and I corresponded a little bit with him after he announced his retirement, and he pledges that he will have even more time for activism now that he's retiring, and I said, "Right on, brother." So, I, couple, the two grant applications, I just want to say, when I think I see Marianne Lawn back there, too. I'm just so pleased to see the district working with the community to engage in this process, and it's a unique role that our college can play in bringing, marshaling the resources together in a, in an important community-based endeavor, and I was really excited to see that, and I hope that we, that grant comes through for us. And then Pat Dorn, Martin, again, the, we got, now, last spring, we were awarded a center. My question is, does this, is this an additional support, funding for that support, too?
This is new.
Okay. And so I'm just hopeful, and I really am pleased to see our following through on this commitment to serving our veterans, and it's wonderful for the district to be doing that. Okay, then twenty-six B, the contracts, there were just two that jumped out at me. First off, the Kleinfelter six, remind me of that again, that's the, that's part of Measure P, and how come it's coming through here as opposed to through the Measure P contract?
The answer is that this is a consultant, much like an architect, only this is the testing labs. So all the concrete, all the steel, all the welds, all of it has to be tested and certified for the division of the state architect, so it comes through as a consultant to the district, paid for out of Measure P.
And is it bid out, or?
It's not bid, because it's a consulting. We go through rather extensive process, however, to determine the best value for dollar, and this is.
And then the last one, I saw Daniel Martinez is going to be the Artist in Residence, and I wanted to see if anybody knew anything about him, but I was excited to see that we've already lined up our Artists in Residence for the spring. And I'm sure we'll find out more about him later, but that was good. My last one was on the purchasing transactions, and I just wanted to state for the record to, oh, twenty, thirty-two B. I appreciate the business office, they put little asterisks by each of the vendors within the district, and, and so for the record, as a board, as an individual trustee, I always think, as much as possible, as long as the costs are competitive, that we continue to try to patronize businesses within the district boundaries, and that I want to continue to encourage the administration to pursue that, without making that an overt policy decision, but to encourage the district to seek, to patronize the vendors that are within the district borders.
Anything else on any consent items?
Motion to approve the consent.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Even moved in a second, and we approved the consent items. Is there any further discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh. You had the advisory vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Flip back to the agenda here. We are now to item G, receipt of fourth quarterly financial status report, discussion with possible action. Dr. Mann?
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion or presentation by Dr. Van Pelt? Any comments?
Well, there is just one thing that I would like to point out, is in terms of the ending balance, the ending balance is $19.7 million, which is $1.2 million higher than it was last year. Three-quarters of that, however, was as a result of an audit finding that we had last year, which revolved around that the faculty load banked hours. We used to carry that on the books as a liability, and we were told that it could no longer be carried that way, and that we would have to undo that liability, which accounts for $900,000 of that amount. What we now have to do is to budget, and we're estimating probably $150,000 a year, in order to cover the use of the load hours. So it's an adjustment, adjustment that was required by the auditors, and that does account for three-quarters of the increase to the ending balance, but you have to mitigate that against the increased costs operationally.
When you say three-quarters, you mean three-quarters of the 19 million?
Three-quarters, sorry, of the $1.2 million increase. So $900,000, $900,000 out of the $1.2 million.
Mr. Baum?
I just want to add a word of appreciation to the administration for managing the college's resources so effectively, so that we have such a healthy balance, because as I understand, the state is again deferring our apportionment, and as we just heard from Mr. McCallum, he projects that we might not even have a budget till November, and it's, it's because we have these resources that the district won't be adversely impacted, and the employees of the district won't be adversely impacted as a result of it.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're on to accreditation and educational master plan update. Dr. Rocha?
Yes, thank you, President Thompson. I'll turn to Dean Miller, and to give a brief update.
Thank you, Dr. Rocha. As you can see from the accreditation update that's in your packet, there's been a lot of activity over the last two months, and the college continues to very aggressively pursue its accreditation responsibilities. This time, we added to this agenda item an educational master plan update as well, and you'll see that integrated within this accreditation update are items that relate to, to our educational master planning process. I just might highlight a couple of quick things along those lines. Since Dr. Rocha's arrival approximately two months ago, there has been a significant effort to increase the participation within both the accreditation and the educational master planning process. And this has been manifested in what we called an extraordinary meeting of the Educational Master Plan and Accreditation Steering Committees on July 20th, which was very well-attended, where Dr. Rocha, Dean Colaros, and myself made presentations, and at that meeting, we had a significant number of new faces participate. As a result of that, we decided that it would be important to pull together a faculty-based task team. Dr. Rocha requested that we pull this group together with representation of at least one full-time and one adjunct faculty member from each of our, of our divisions, add that to our Accreditation Response Steering Committee, as well as our Educational Master Plans Steering Committee, and bring those groups together at least twice. We had our first meeting on August 19th, we had 49 people in attendance there, and again, it was a lot of new faces. At that meeting, we did several things, but the core was, we provided a, an update on where we are with our accreditation process, using a new scorecard methodology that set forth what our specific goals were as of March 15th, well, basically a scorecard methodology in terms of where we're going to be on October 15th with this task being completed. We also provided a very, very in-depth report of where we are with the educational master plan process, and discussed what will occur on September 10th, which is a performance measurement workshop that will be facilitated by MIG, where we will actually look at the goals that we are setting forth in the educational master plan, and develop some very specific measurement, performance measurement frameworks to basically guide and make certain that, in fact, we can achieve, achieve those goals. In addition to that, Dr. Rocha and I have spent considerable time with MIG discussing the plan and its development, and where we go as we bring it to a very successful conclusion. We have modified, to some degree, the scope of work for MIG as it relates to the efficient expenditure, the balance of the agreement that we have with MIG to, to get what is needed for the district as we go forward. And along those lines, will also be a plan that talks about how we can annually update the plan, update the educational master plan in a manner that informs both our facilities and our technology planning process, but to do that by staff, as opposed to bringing a consultant in to help us with that. So I will just conclude by saying that we are very much on track for the completion of our follow-up report by October 15th. I will add my great appreciation to the college faculty and staff and others who have been incredibly engaged in this process. Dr. Rocha's leadership has been very, very significant, as he has rallied the campus around both the completion of the accreditation, getting a self-warning requirement, as well as the completion of educational master plan. And to make that plan the guiding light as we go forward. So I think I'll wrap it up at that. Dr. Rocha, is there anything else that you feel we need to add to this? I'd be happy to-
No, it's a very good report.
Just one question that comes to mind immediately. In terms of your discussions with MIG, are we paying him additional money, or is this part of the original contract?
This is part of the original contract at the moment, and this is where we anticipate that it will stop. If there is a need to go further with that, then Dr. Rocha and I will make a recommendation accordingly.
Okay, good, thank you. Other questions or comments?
Actually, I do have a comment. I really would like to commend the staff for this report. It shows that they have put in a lot of time, and I understand that it's been a long process, but I think after this is all over, we are going to be in a better position. The school will have processes in place that we will be ready for anything else that come forth. I want to commend in particular Dean Miller and Dean Crystal Colaros, I hope I don't mispronounce her name. And I've been, it's been since I came on board, they've been working on this, so I have been in accreditation process before, where it's a continuous job, and you never know how things are going to work out. So I just want to encourage you to, there is light at the end of the tunnel, you're almost there, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I just want to mention, too, from Ms. Brown's comments, is that the recommendations, one and two, every university I know is being hit with assessment. I think it's the most difficult thing, and faculty, including myself, we give a grade, and we believe that's assessment, but it is the most difficult thing today, and they're really focusing on that, so we've all been dinged by it. I just went through accreditation, and I got the warning, too.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Baum?
I just had a question, too. With respect to the accreditation recommendation number five, and I wanted to just clarify from the board, it says, "The team recommends the college develop and implement formal processes for the regular evaluation of each component of its governance and decision-making structures." We, as a, as a board, had actually reviewed our own assessment policies in the past, and is there any additional action that the board, as a, as a component of this, needs to consider or act upon?
As, as the board is aware, the board has a specific bylaw that speaks to your assessment process, and you do that on an annual basis. In addition to that, last year, I believe it was April or May, the board engaged in a further assessment of their activities by issuing a survey document to selected members of the campus community. You did collect that data, that information was done, and the board can choose to go further. In relation to this specific recommendation, the board is in compliance with that, and as we report out October 15-
Something we're more interested in, right.
We will, we will report that.
Okay. So no additional action is needed by the board-
Not, not-
-to demonstrate compliance with that?
No, I think we're fine right now.
Are there other questions? Ms. Colaros, you've been awfully quiet.
I am quiet.
Okay. Well, she, Crystal has had a, you know, great deal to do with, you know, not only the report today, but everything that we're doing as, you know, Ed, and as we've mentioned before. So it's a team effort, and all the credit belongs to the staff.
Yeah, she and Bob have worked very, very hard on, done a great job, and so they deserve all the credit. We're hope trying to dish their way. So anything else dealing with this? Any more questions? There's no action we need to take, is there?
No, President Thompson, just a report.
I do have one question. We had in the board packet here, a revised or amended letter that we got from the committee that, which I'm not putting my hands on at the moment, the committee that-
Oh, is that it?
Yes, that's it. No wonder I couldn't find it. What's, what's the, it says corrected letter dated June 30th, 2010, which we received August 16th, 2010.
We don't-
There was a clerical-
I don't have that.
Okay, well, it-
Yeah, I can explain that briefly.
It came to me, I guess, as the board president-
There was a clerical error made by the commission staff in terms of how they wrote the original letter. We brought that to their attention, and they just, they just corrected it.
Oh, okay.
But in sum and substance, it's the same letter.
Exactly.
Good, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, then let's move on to item I, resolution AB, Assembly Bill 1440, discussion with possible action.
Move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item J, public hearing and approval of contract for 2010, 2011 between the Pasadena City College Instructional Support Services Unit, ISSU, and the Pasadena Area Community College District. Discussion with possible action. Is anybody in the public who wants to address the board on this issue? Is there a motion to a public hearing, excuse me, forgive me. We'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the board on this matter? None appearing. The public hearing is closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Well, that was one of the few times you can really use the gavel.
I know. I have other uses for the gavel.
Okay.
Just, don't sit too close.
Mr. Thompson, do we need to vote then on this? It says discussion with possible action. To approve the contract?
Well, I think it, approval of contract, so yes, I think we need a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Just one bit of discussion, congratulations to the administration and to the members of the ISSU to have successfully concluded a, this, this contract agreement. This is a great achievement.
Yeah, and I do also want, since Anna Mae is here, want to thank Lyle for his role, but also thank issue and Anna Mae for her representation, and for a good bargaining and good faith that has led to this contract, which is good for, good for the college, good for the employees. So I thank you very much.
Terrific.
And Glenna, just one-
Yeah. Item K, receive and set public hearing regarding 2010, 2011 initial bargaining proposal from the Pasadena Area Community College District to the Pasadena City College Faculty Association. Discussion with possible action. Dr. Rocha?
Yes, President Thompson, you'll see, on the agenda, and the public agenda, you'll see the initial issues in, of the district's proposal. Let me get to it, that is your item K. There we go. Okay. And this information is the list of potential issues for negotiations between the district and the faculty association- and the faculty association. It is the number of articles that, it is the articles that we would like to discuss with the faculty. It is the beginning and not the end of the collective bargaining process. We have on hand General Counsel Mary Dow, and General Counsel will represent the district with Lyle as lead negotiator in the collective bargaining process with the faculty association. We have already received and sunshine the faculty association's proposal, which by presenting ours is a commitment to come to the table and bargain in good faith. So, following your discussion, this is submitted for your adoption.
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Wait, 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 wait.
Okay, Ms. Dow.
Sorry to interrupt, but there's nothing for the board to approve tonight.
But we have to...
You only need to set the hearing.
We're setting the date.
I just want to be sure it's very clear that all the board is doing is setting a hearing.
Okay.
And not approving.
No, no.
The proposal.
That's what Dr. Fellow would say.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt, but it just sounded like it was approving the proposal.
No, no.
Is there anybody who wishes to address the board? Anybody in the audience wishing to address the board on this topic? Okay, we have a motion, I think we have a second.
Yes, we do.
Did we get a second? Do we have a second to receive this and to designate the meeting of September 1st? It's time for receiving public comment regarding the initial proposal of the district.
So moved. I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Bylaw review, discussion with possible action, bylaw 1830 miscellaneous travel expense. Dr. Mann?
Yes, just a little bit of background to remind the board, that our bylaws are based on the model bylaws provided by the California Community College League of California. These have been reviewed by the college's executive committee, and they have been reviewed by the college coordinating council, and they've also been reviewed by the board's subcommittee on policy. And all that the board approves is the policy itself, not the procedures. The first by, the first bylaw, number 1830, on miscellaneous travel expenses is just a policy. The only changes there are to clarify personal car mileage reimbursement, and also the, when you attend a conference, how much your $32 per day actually covers. And Mr. Thompson raised the question, is $32 a day adequate for food? And the board has, for a long time, gone with the state rate, and this is the state rate, and that's what we do, and it applies to everyone, board members, administrators, faculty, staff, and students. Is that correct? Yes. So, if there's not any questions, I would move approval of bylaw number 830.
1830.
1830, right.
Is there a second in the motion?
Second.
I'm sorry, a second? Okay, Dr. Fellow, second. Any discussion? Mr. Martin?
If our fundamental philosophy is that we're going at the state rate, I wonder if instead of setting it $32, we couldn't set the policy to say at the state rate? And then, as the state rate changes, our policy would automatically be in compliance, and it not require a board action to reset the rate?
That would be a way of doing it, if that's the underlying principle, as apparently it is. Ms. Kil...
Crystal was working on this.
I just want to clarify that the $32 is not the state rate, it's actually $2 less than the state rate, because the state rate actually was more specific in how much money could be spent for each meal. So, we chose to go with a flat rate, and you could spend it any way you wanted.
And I knew that, I'm sorry, Crystal, I should have conveyed that. There's your answer.
So, instead of 34, we get to spend 32?
Right, but we, the other says like $7 for lunch, and $4 cents for breakfast, and $9 and a quarter for midnight snack. Is that not correct, Crystal? That's what the state rate is.
Okay, any further discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Dr. Mann, policy review with possible action, policy number 5250, professional conference attendance.
Okay, again, this, we are approving the policy and not the procedures, although if we have suggestions about the procedures, we've then given them to the administration. And the only change in the policy is just to label it as a policy. So, I would move approval of this policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and approval, or moved and seconded, I should say. Mr. Baum?
Just a point of clarification. It's my understanding that we actually do not approve the procedures, that they're more for information.
That's why I said, we only approve the policy.
But the policy's already, there's no changes to the policy.
Yes, there is. It's, the first sentence, see where it's dark, it says revised, it says, this is misstamped, it should say revised policy on there.
And which is the text?
The policy is the one that says policy number 520, page 1, it's that first three paragraphs, and the only there is...
Right here, I think it's the word, I think the only change is that word, right there.
Oh, it is the policy?
Yes, even though it's...
If I understood her, that's what she's saying, they changed that word.
And the policy's on white paper, and the procedures are on yellow paper.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Other questions or comments? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we are on to future board meeting dates.
I can't believe that.
Saturday, August 28th, at 9:30 a.m. at Cal Tech Atheneum, summer board retreat. Wednesday, September 1, 2010, regular board meeting. And Wednesday, September 15th, the regular board meeting. Future agenda items?
Wait, I have a question on the board meeting dates. I'm concerned about when the committee to review the applications for the board seat is going to meet, and if we're going to notice those meetings, should we settle on that now, or how are we going to do that? Because our time schedule says that we will complete this initial review by September 8th, which is only a little over a week away.
That's a very good point.
Maybe the committee should stay after and work their calendars and decide that and then announce it.
Yeah, my thought would be, we could announce that at Saturday, or we could say and announce it this evening, or we could announce it Saturday at the retreat.
You, the committee can announce when that meeting is occurring, whenever the committee decides to do it. It doesn't have to be at a regular board meeting, you make that announcement.
But we could announce it there also.
Sure.
Yeah, all right, right, so.
All right.
I think it's preferable to have a public announcement on it, but any other questions about board meeting dates or anything? Future agenda items, Ms. Brown?
None.
Dr. Mann?
Yes, I would like to talk a little bit about the agenda for the board retreat. I had sent Dr. Rocha an email about this, and then I realized that we can, that is a future meeting, the agenda for the board retreat, which is going to be on Saturday. I had requested, and I would like to have this go on the record, that on the agenda, which unfortunately I didn't bring with me, it says roles and responsibilities of the board. I would like it specifically to say roles and responsibility of the board officers, in addition to the board and the college president. And also, I would like to make sure that the board's norms and protocols are on the agenda, so that they, because there is a topic, something like meetings, agendas, and board processes, and the norms and protocols are certainly part of the board processes. So, that can just be any way to include the board processes. So, if it's not too late, and I don't think it is, we have 72 hours before that meeting, I would like to suggest those changes of the agenda we receive through the mail.
Yes, first of all, to be responsive, Trustee Mann, I did take that up, and I forwarded the information to Syndra, who is the facilitator. It will be taken to the meeting, and in her view, it wasn't necessary that those things are subsumed in some of the already public agenda items, but those specific items that you called out will be carried to the retreat on Saturday.
I understand that's Ms. Smith's view, but as a board member, I would like to see those things listed on the agenda, particularly the roles and responsibilities of the board, of the board officers.
We can certainly put that on, that won't be a problem.
Done.
Okay, anything else with respect to board meeting dates? Okay, or future agenda items? Mr. Martin? Mr. Baum?
Two things. One is just to, as we discussed, we may need to close the loop on our self-evaluation process, so we might need to agendize that since we started it, but I don't think we ever concluded it last spring. And then, number two, the boardroom setup, I'd like to have an opportunity for the board members to weigh in now that we have a new dynamic and see, to get some consensus on how we should set up the physical space.
Okay. Dr. Fellow?
I just wanted to ask, is the student rep invited to the meeting on Saturday or not?
I...
They're not specifically invited, it's a public meeting, so any member of the public can attend.
I recall, we've had prior retreats, hasn't the student trustee attended?
They're available to attend anything but the closed session.
Right, but I think, have we not specifically invited the student trustee to attend and participate?
Well, we should, if we haven't.
Yeah, I think we have. He might have some good ideas on how we should conduct our meetings.
He might. Very good. Okay, we hope to see you 9:30 Saturday morning.
I will be there.
Good, all right. Any other future agenda items? Okay, anything else to bring up this evening?
I have, I would like to go back to retreat agenda again. We usually have on our retreat agenda a closed session, whether we have a closed session or not. And we usually have it towards the end of the meeting, in case there's something we need to take up, we then can do it, and then everyone else can go home. So, I would like to suggest that we add that, just in case something arises that we need to discuss in closed session, although I know we're meeting again in a week.
Can we ask perhaps Counsel to comment on this?
The problem with trying to have a closed session just in case is that the Brown Act requires that the agenda that is posted reflect the topics the board will take up in closed session, which requires you to know when you post the agenda, what will need to be discussed.
And since we haven't prepared anything, that's, I withdraw that suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else to be brought up this evening? Any?
Since I will be attending the Saturday meeting, if I could just get a copy of the agenda, because I haven't gotten one yet.
We can do that.
Great, thank you.
We will do that. Anybody over here? Dr. Van Pelt, Dr. Jacobs, Dr. Wilcox, Dr. Sigamotto, Mr. Engeldier, Ms. Chapman?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I think then we are adjourned.